Council Bluff Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Good afternoon. I wanted to talk briefly about the status of financial health and the operations for the year that just ended, June 30th, for the city. If this seems like something we haven't done before, it's because we have not done this this early in the year. Usually we wait for the audit to get done, and that's usually happening in November or December. But I feel like we've got a pretty good handle on what the general ledger this year and what our financial statements look like. And while the numbers may change a little bit after the audit, they're not going to change appreciably. So before I go through some of the specifics for us, I just wanted to remind the whole room here, the objectives of government financial management are slightly different from business goals. In government, we're looking to provide the needed and desired services to our population. That differs from business, who provides goods and services to a market to make a profit to benefit its owners. The next objective that we have is to operate efficiently and effectively. Same with business, they seek to do that. We also want to operate according to our plan or our budget, no different from businesses. When we get into talking about cash, it's a little different. Government needs to find the proper balance of cash so that we can have good liquidity and uninterrupted services. Businesses tend to want to accumulate cash so they can expand their product line or expand their businesses or reward their owners with dividends. So slightly different goal there. And then fund balances, or in this case, profits and net worth. Governments need to maintain adequate fund balances so that they have stability and can get good credit ratings, which can lower their overall credit costs. Businesses want to build up their profits so that they can, again, much like cash, reward their shareholders or expand their businesses. So goals are slightly different here. I gave you three sheets. The first sheet is what I still call our income statement, but basically it's our statement of operations, and it shows revenues and expenses for the city for the year. And there's three things I want to talk about on that as they apply to our objectives. Bullet point number one, you'll see it at total government operating expense and total expenses. Basically, what I'm pointing out there is that for the year that just ended, we spent 99.6% of our budget on government expenses. And on total expenses, we spent 99.6% of our budget. That's really what we want to do. Unlike businesses where you don't want to have expenses, we want to provide the services, we want to provide it for our planned for costs. So what's the best way to do that? Use the money and carry out your plan. Second thing I wanted to point out to you is bullet point number two. It shows up in the revenue section at intergovernmental revenue and total revenue. We received 95.6% of the revenue that we anticipated this year. The one line item where we didn't get up into the high 90s was in intergovernmental revenue. These are grants or reimbursements for projects and that sort of thing. We budgeted the amount that was in the CIP to flow back this year, but sometimes timing is off and it comes back, it'll come later in the year. So I'm not too concerned about that at this stage. And then bullet point three on this page, I take us to our number one source of funding, and that's property taxes. And during the past year, we collected 99% of the property taxes that we had levied. If I find that, that's good news as well. And we're never going to collect 100 because there's always adjustments to people's values and that sort of thing. And during the year, people are petitioning for their values to go down, and sometimes they do. Nobody's ever petitioning for them to go up. So collecting 99% during the year is good news.
Is that typical?
Yeah, we've been running 98 to 99% each year. So it's, you know, we see a fairly good collection stream on our property taxes. It's been one of the pleasant surprises of being in this community that we see there. The next page I wanted to take you to, and again, three things I wanted to point out there, is our total expenses for the year. I mentioned we spent according to our plan. Well, somebody could look and say, did you just get lucky? Did things just kind of fall into shape? And I've got the numbers here for two reasons. The first is, I wanted to show you bullet point number one, that much like our total expenses, salaries and wages, this does not include benefits, we're at 99.6% of what we had planned. So literally, we staffed and worked according to our plan. Was that the perfect way to do it? Don't know. But we did stay with our plan. You know, I think in the upcoming weeks, months, you might, you know, you're going to hear about changing positions and that sort of thing. The key going forward isn't necessarily that we follow the past, but it's that we set a course with staffing to operate efficiently, effectively, incorporate that into 2016's budget, and again, work according to the plan. Uncertainty in finance is probably the biggest enemy you could have. We don't have uncertainty through the course of the year, as you can see here. Landed just where we expected to be in payroll. In benefits, slightly lower. Our benefits are seven and a half percent higher than they were a year ago, but they're not as high as we anticipated when we were budgeting because of, retirement costs went up like they should, workers' comp, insurance costs didn't rise quite as much as we expected, as we planned. I think we always expect to go low, plan to go to a reasonable number, and hope that we come slightly lower than that. And then our other expenses, we spent 101% of what we had anticipated, and that was mostly in capital or capital-like expenses. We didn't have a situation where our operating costs are what we call the true expenses. There wasn't anything that appeared to be uncontrolled or way out of line. Where we did go over the budget was in capital projects, and that's something, that's more of an investment than a cost. Overall, coming in with our expenses, we're just where we hoped they would be and effectively run. So then the question, last question becomes, what is the health of our community? And does the fact that in 2014, our expenses were higher than our revenues, does that mean we're, you know, does that mean anything negative? And to do that, to kind of show a bigger picture, I gave you a six-year snapshot of a couple of items. The first is our cash. What I should mention to you is the green shaded areas are things that have been audited. So you can go with those numbers. 2014 still has to be audited, they're preliminary, and they will change a little bit, so proceed with caution on those numbers, and then we give the averages. June 30th of this year, we had $41.2 million in the bank. Six years ago, we had $45 million in the bank. I like to keep anywhere from 90 to 120 days of expenses in cash. Why? Because our big revenue generators, property taxes, are six months apart. Just in case something gets funky, it's nice to have three or four months' cash to make sure we get through it. Well, in this fiscal year, we've got 123 days of cash, days of expenses, in our checkbook. Over the last six years, we've maintained an average of 120 days, just so we've been right on plan. And you can see in 11 and 12, when we had flood costs, the balances were a little lower, but we've reestablished that. In governmental, going down to governmental funds, you look over those six years, and when you take, when you consider that in '09, we had $5 million of local option sales tax that was getting classified in business-type activities. If that hadn't have been classified in governmental funds like we do it now, for the last six years, we basically had ranged from $90 million to $96 million in operating revenues. That $107 million that you see in '12 was mostly FEMA reimbursement. So we've been operating in this narrow band of about $90 to $95 million in revenues for each of the last six years. In those six years, we've managed to purchase $140 million in capital assets. We've, and this is the one that I think that really jumps out of us. We've managed to pay off $12.25 million of debt without raising taxes, without doing anything spectacular, staying within the revenue that we're generating. We run the city, paid off $12.5 million in debt, and have maintained our fund balances and at an adequate level for both governmental funds and for the proprietary funds. So at June 30th this year, fiscally, we're in good shape. And we got through the year, we operated according to our plan, we've got enough for future liquidity. Going forward, things still look good. We'll begin the audit in August, do more of the work, starting in mid-September through early October. Anticipate having a report out around Thanksgiving time that we'll either substantiate this or give me a reason to go hide. I don't anticipate that. One of the things, there's two things that make being able to do this on July 28th, you know, less than a month after a month after a year end, to be able to report this with some confidence. You know, we've constantly moved up over the last few years, the work that we do, and we've got everything in our general ledger. And it's nice just to be able to go to the books and say, if the transactions happen, it's in the books, let's get the totals and report it. And the other thing that happens throughout the year is that all of the department heads manage their departments on an ongoing basis. You know, this is, there's no, well, gosh, I hope we're on target. They all look to their activity each month, they plan it effectively, they react if there's something to react to. So it's very much a large group effort, a lot of people contribute to eliminating the uncertainty, which allows, which allows, my hope allows, those of you who have to make decisions when it relates to dollar signs, to make it a little more objective and less, you know, I hope we're going in the right direction mentality. That's always been the goal, and I think it always will be. Thank you. Do you have any questions, Sarah?
Thanks. I guess I would just like to say, add my thanks to you and the department heads for, you know, maintaining and living within the budget, just like each of the taxpayers has to live within the budget. It's nice that the city does that as well. On your bullet point number five, actually, there's two marked four, but I think it's five.
Oh, yeah.
Increasing costs means rate study is needed. Is that something you're suggesting for next year that we?
Well, I think we're already in the process of that.
Of increasing the tax rate?
No, 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 this is, that comment is on business-type activity, which consists of sewer funds and sanitation funds.
Okay, all right.
And the one where it's needed to be recognized is on the sewer side of it.
Okay. I was kind of panicking, because we're living within our budget, but we're looking at increasing tax rates.
No, 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 I wouldn't say we should increase.
Good, okay.
You know, there's one or two elements that, you know, there's six or seven components that come up to the $17.75 that become our overall rate. I think possibly next year, there might be one or two programs that'll either require or merit a slight increase in that levy. But I think overall levy shouldn't necessarily have to go up unless there's, you know, some sort of adverse effect of the commercial property tax reform, or if there's a surprise that we don't know about. This year should, you know, I think the backfill was established for two years, and if we do come through that, '16 should be fairly close to what '15 was. It's after that that you might have to look at it. But I did that, add that comment in there, because there might be one or two levies where if the, if there's some good planning, it's a follow-up that goes into it, you know, a small increase might be helpful. Matt Cox has a consultant looking at the sewer rates right now, coming with a plan, a suggested plan, I guess.
So you continue, well, return to business itself.
Yeah.
Funding.
What are the take?
Sure.
Then you just return what you want to do with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. All right, going to the agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that had a question in regards to?
I have a question on G. On the list of bills, there was one item that was highlighted. Was that in particular, were we supposed to look at that? It was, huh?
I wasn't sure whether I had asked it.
So I must have been, so I, Art, was that?
I'm sorry.
It was like software or something? I can't remember. But there was one item that was highlighted. Was that highlighted for us in particular?
Probably for me.
Okay, all right, we're good.
It didn't seem to have.
Okay, because I was looking.
I was highlighting, I couldn't do that often.
I was trying to figure out what the significance of the highlight was.
Here's a little secret. You know, we don't, we don't take and print that whole report from within itself as, write to a PDF. I print it, I review it, I'll mark it up a little bit, and then just instead of running on a copy, just scan it. Generally, if there's stuff off to the side or highlighting, it's me saying, what do I have to find more out of before I send this out?
Okay. Thank you.
I did want to commend the library, Kathy, for, I noticed a 17% increase in patronage of the library and all of the activities going on and managing to do it within current budgetary constraints. The nominal speaks very highly of your staff.
Thank you.
Please welcome, it's very appreciated.
Twenty years ago, I stood up in front of everybody and said, nobody will use the library anymore, voice taxpayer down.
Really?
And I've eaten those words for, the usage continually goes up, and there's new and unique ways that the library issues. Kathy mentioned this morning that they're leasing books out now, buy multiple copies of novel.
It's just, it's really easy to print things down.
Yeah. He has some pool of kids in it, so somewhere really good. Yeah, that's neat.
Anything on the public hearings? Orders for first consideration or second page, Jim?
Okay, on 5A, I didn't see in the write-up, was the owner's question on the consolidation of storage, was that answered? And I assume there's some sort of lease agreement that Arrow Tony is allowed to store on the Burlington property? Do we know about the storage consolidation? There was a question at the post of the planning commission, I didn't see the answer.
Comment from the public?
Yeah, they were going to come, they didn't know if they needed to come. The engineer might be, I say I know Arrow is sending someone to find out about that too.
I don't know if they have a lease with the B and properties.
Do you know? And then the consolidation of the storage, can you speak to that?
Well, I can speak to one thing. I had some conversation with Brad Aerosmith about the possibility of perhaps vacating Sixth Avenue, or at least maybe closing it from, I guess that would be 15th to 14th. So as I understand it, you could take his current building on Fifth, and he could fence the whole area, and it would be all continuous. And we have talked with him about purchasing the two properties he has on the east side of Indian Creek and Fifth. He has a lot of drinking, and there's a house.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other questions on 5A? You have 5B on the rise here?
I have a question on 5B. I'm a little bit confused on the zoning change. They're changing it, or we're changing it for, to cover car sales or cover repair. Is the outdoor storage considered the car storage? And Broadway is C2, right? Or is it Broadway? I'm just trying to figure out the difference in zoning.
We're requesting the rezoning so that Mr. Glenn can conduct, use car auto sales on the property for I-1. We looked at the possibility of simply doing a conditional use application to maintain his current zoning as C2. However, this was much more consistent with the overall usage that he's currently having on the property for equipment, repair. He's doing some light equipment repair on both automobiles, as well as some heavier farm equipment for the larger tires. So with respect to your question for the outdoor storage area, the site plan that we've submitted to the council does show a proposed enclosed tire storage yard towards the north end of the property. And so that is laid out on our site plan by Mr. Guyer. And that simply is for the enclosure of tire storage. With respect to storage of used automobiles that he's intending to sell, he's only intending to sell, you know, like three at a time. So it's not going to be a large used car auto dealership. It's just simply to expand his existing, existing space.
I guess there was no site plan in our pack.
This little, I think it's just.
Page 69.
Big what? Oh, it was before the write-up.
There's like page 63 or something, or is that? There's like a whole bunch. 63, 64, that's where I have.
So it's before, oh, okay, so it was just before the write-up, so I. Okay, so the red outlined area is the expansion, or it's in the blue area next to it?
The red area, I think.
Yes. C2 to I-1.
Red is what the app was requesting. City has expanded the rezoning.
Right, okay, I guess that makes more sense. I just was confused as to, I was thinking auto sales and repairs, similar to what's done on Broadway, and I didn't think Broadway was I.
Oh, this is on East Salem operations.
No, I understand that. I was using Broadway car sales as an analogy.
I got you.
And I didn't know what was going to be stored, how much, if that was cars, et cetera. So you answered my question.
Is the fact that tires would be stored, require general classification as industrial as opposed to commercial?
The tire storage area is all going to be hard service in an app, so that is permissible under proposing.
It's permissible under what?
What is being proposed, rezoned.
So it's not permissible under C2? Which, or, no, wait, yeah, it was C2. I guess that's what confused me. I thought that all of the activities were permissible already under C2.
I think the grandfather did.
Okay.
And with respect to the specific details related to the tire storage yard, that is going to be more detailed and more fully discussed when Mr. Glenn intends to submit his application for a conditional use permit if the zoning before you, if the zoning application before you gets approved. Because there are some additional restrictions with respect to, as Mr. Wayne mentioned, the hard servicing of that, that we would like to discuss with the zoning board just.
So you're asking for the rezoning, but then you're going to be asking for certain provisions to be waived?
No, no, it's a conditional use. Once you're in a zone, then certain uses can be conditional, if the zoning board grants you that conditional use.
Right, right.
Maybe it's put additional conditions on that use.
Okay.
So that's what we're talking about there, about hard service.
Okay, all right, so the zoning is still going to be proper?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. There's just a list of things you can do. Right, I knew that, I was thinking of if there's something you can do there, then let's just give them the correct zoning.
Other questions on that one? Anything on the resolutions?
Larry, I've got a couple of questions on the fair line.
Say what?
I have one. I would like to. You know, the big question I've got, and I've had a couple of people ask me, I have no idea where the answer is. If you go in and remove the invasive species, how long before they're back? And how do you make sure they don't come back? Because like, I will kill and root kill a tree of heaven every single year of my life. How do you, spending this money then to get it out, how long is it going to stay on, or what's the?
Well, these are certainly not forever changes. And the environment will continue to expand and will adjust to what we do. Some of these species will grow back over time. But it's taken, you know, more than I, I mean, it's probably taken 50, 60 years for it to look the way it is now. So it will, at some point, likely they will come back. It's also possible that they're more invasive, because when they begin to take hold, that oak coverage wasn't so significant. So now that the oaks are bigger, what we want to keep is denser, it may somewhat slow down the reestablishment of what we really don't want in there. But it is not a forever solution.
Do you have a plan in place, I guess, for the next, for the beginning years after the clearing out, to sort of watch and treat?
In some cases, we could probably go.
So never any battle of what?
Steve Kagan, Brian, Steve Kagan. These are basic.
The aliens? The alien trees?
Some areas we may be able to hold occasionally. Some of them are too steep and you can't. So I don't, I guess, I don't think anybody looks at these as permanent solutions. They, you look at it as the right thing to do for a fairly significant length of time.
I opened it up, I was curious, I asked on Facebook, and I got 14 responses. And people are very excited. I think they see this as a step. It won't solve certainly everything that we'd love to do in the park, and constraints of time, and certainly finances, but there is, not one person there or anywhere else I've spoken to recently is against the idea of trying to open that up, particularly to be able to see, you know, eventually lookout point, you could actually look out with all that invasive plants filling it in. People are very excited to use it, to use it more, and certainly this is a step, a very important step, and I commend it on the road to, you know, restoring that park into a private. to a pride and joy that it was and can be.
And I wanna caution that this is an application. We have been, we've been, every year I've been here, we've had applications, and sometimes they get funded, sometimes they don't. I think last time they had probably close to fifty, and they funded about twelve. So I think it's competitive, I think this is the kind of project that we really kind of likes to do, so our fingers are crossed. The last one that we were successful with was Big Lake. So it's a little bit of that flavor, of the natural element of it. Hopefully, we'll point out well that we'll be successful.
Thank you.
The additional questions on the resolutions?
I just wanna know where this cottonwood tree is that the bids were so extremely high.
Extremely big tree.
It must be.
One of our faults was that we were requesting three million dollars insurance from the contractor, and that was just not gonna happen. The one who placed a twenty-three thousand dollar bid said he would go after it, since that was thirteen thousand more than the lower bid, we'd like just to bring it forward in this manner. We've checked around in a hearing to speak to this, as to whether or not two lands in that amount of best term will require over contracts.
Is this just, it's just a super big tree? I mean, I don't understand nine foot, I suppose it's either nine or twelve.
I've not actually seen it personally, but everybody's very impressed with it.
Very impressed with it. Well, now that I can drive, I'll have to drive by it.
When the cattle that goes bad, it goes bad.
Yeah.
They follow over.
Right. On C, I was just, Tom's not here. I was gonna be so disappointed. Now he's there.
He's there.
What?
He's here.
Money!
He was ducked it down.
Hit him with your question.
More than a quarter million, is that normal? Or am I just, I mean, it's just astounding the number of people in this city who don't pay their garbage bills.
Absolutely.
Is, that's normal?
Actually, it's down from the number of people that have paid. Yeah, it's closer to, I think, twenty-five this time, I can't remember, a hundred, it's closer to three at the last.
Are we tracking to see if there's repeat offenders? And what can we, I mean, that's just a lot of money, that's probably more money than your, than a city, I don't know, is there any city department that has funded that amount, or less than that amount? It's just astounding.
It does appear that going to quarterly billing has made, has made a difference in being able to lean in, despite the state law that.
And I'll put something together in regard to, now that we've got a full year under development. But the other thing is, when we put this out, the amount of money that we actually lean is a lot less, because people who pay their bill from the time that you see it, the time we actually.
Is less, because people are coming in to pay their bills?
That's true.
Is the collection rate still kind of going?
We're, yeah, we still have a lot of, a large number of people that don't pay their bill.
I just can't imagine.
Let's deal with it.
Most Brits do the math, it's about fifty bucks a billing, so that gives you an idea of how many people are paying.
Yeah, a lot.
There seem to be any theme in there as far as homeowners versus renters versus any?
I can put that all together for you.
Curious. I'd be curious, sometimes you hear that it could be banks and foreclosures, and I don't know if there's any truth to that in this instance, if you'd like to know.
Okay.
And if there's any repeat, ten years. If there's any way to.
I would say ninety percent of them are repeat, but.
Ninety, ninety.
And, you know, for some people though, I mean, keeping in mind when times are tight, you rotate who gets paid this month, and I get that.
Yes.
But I think there's probably a little more of a common theme throughout there, I don't know, so I think just to see what the.
It'd be nice to know, yeah, there's probably a lot of people who truly could pay.
Right.
Your point, there are, yes, there are always circumstances in which people can't, and really would prefer to, but can't believe it's that many.
Right, you have to buy food or medicine, you're gonna be that.
I would understand that, but that, to that degree, it'd be astonishing.
I have had some feedback from some people on fix tantrums that really appreciate the shorter billing times, it's easier to come up with, you know, less money more often than the larger bills, so.
Right, I understand.
And then on the applications?
Were there any concerns? I can't, I didn't recall seeing a sheet in place. I assume there aren't any. There aren't any, maybe I lost, I'll give you this time, so.
It's in the violation.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Do we have executive session?